Everyone, please join me in closing the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will call this meeting to work. Members present are Darryl Baker, County attorney, Attorney General, President Charles Vance, Commissioner, and Charles McCann, Commissioner. Next word of business is to approve the minutes of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission Meeting that was held on October 2nd, 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That being unanimous, motion carries. Next, we are into public comments. Ryan Jefferson with the Lincoln County Green Waste Water.
I'll just tell you from back here, it's gonna be good. Once again, this possibly is my last county commission meeting, probably more likely than possibly, and I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to work with you. You know, I've really had a good time working here. Tried to do the best I possibly could, and so, you know, felt like I did a good job. You know, want to thank Rick for helping mentor me and, you know, train me in the things that he's been doing, and just glad I could make a difference in the county for at least a couple of years, anyway. At this point, Phase Five is still kind of happening, where, you know, weather's been kind of real tough. You know, we've got a couple installations still, but my feeling is, at this point, I mean, if we don't get a couple of really good days, it's gonna cause problems if we put a bunch of systems in in the winter, so we may just kind of stop things for a while, and Rick pick things back up when the weather turns better. You know, we were supposed to have an installation this weekend, I just, you know, it's supposed to rain Saturday. I doubt it's gonna happen. We were able to get one more in, let's see, I think it may have been last week. I can't remember if it was week, last week or the week before, but we did one more installation there. Everything went well. You know, we're just getting final inspections on things and winding it down as possible, best as possible, and then, you know, we'll just keep working till the end, till it can't work anymore, I believe, so. As far as that.
Really appreciate it, Ryan.
Thank you, guys.
On behalf of the county commissioner, Ryan, could you come through a little bit? We'd like to present this to you for all the hard work that you've done.
Thank you.
With the wastewater, and this is from the fellow commissioners.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you, mate. Thank you, guys.
Glad to be quick, okay? You good, Ryan? Want me to get in here? Oh, you wanna get in?
Yeah.
No, I'm just trying.
There we go.
You can't read his line.
No. What does that sound like?
Not like I was alone.
I appreciate that, commissioners, thank you so much.
Good job, Ryan. All right. Next on the agenda is Mr. Sharp, concerning water and litter.
Thank you for allowing me to speak at this time. I've got a couple of questions here. You may or may not be able to comment on it at this time. If not, I'll understand. You can get back to me with any answers later. On the Lincoln PSD, who can ask for an audit?
The audit, we can ask for an audit through the Public Service Commission. I intend to do that tonight.
When was the last time an audit was done?
The audits are supposed to be performed yearly by state code, per state code. I mean, I'm just, I mean, that's from what I've read, okay?
Who can authorize the sale of equipment?
Authorization from the sale of equipment would have to go, it actually had to be auctioned, and it would have to go through the board. Am I correct? Now, you have to correct me if I'm wrong here, guys.
When you say the board, are you talking about your board, or?
No, it would be the Lincoln, it would be the public, it would be the Lincoln Public Service District. Their board is, their board is autonomous from us.
Well, I go to their meetings and they had a problem. They said that they were missing a trailer. They sold a truck, and the trailer came up missing, and it was sold also. Because they didn't have a trailer to haul the backhoe on, and they were having to run the backhoe up the road with an escort because they didn't have a trailer. So they didn't know who got the trailer.
What did you ask of Mr. Sharp?
I asked a second time, and they said they were investigating.
When did this happen? What, can you give me a date? When you went?
Oh, it's been within the last probably six months.
Okay.
The next question is, do you have any plans for a litter officer?
Yes, I think we have some plans in the works. Currently, what we're doing, because of some unfunded mandates, that's been kind of, that's been put on us, we are, we are cutting back. We're actually trying not to spend as much right now, because we have a lot of things that we're trying to, trying to do. We have a lot of water projects that's been committed, about $525,000 worth of water projects that were committed, and trying to save some money for this courthouse annex. So, as of right now, what we're trying to do is, I think we're gonna try to look at that at the beginning of the year. And I, just, just, just about with every request, I mean, that's my personal opinion. I mean, I'm sure these other guys have opinions, but what, what I intend to do is, is see where we're at around January and see what we can do. But it's, it's my intention to have a litter officer. I think that's what we need.
The only other question I had was about the open dump, and I gave you the pictures, and you already handled that, so. I thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have Brenda Askew with water.
Oh, a conservable. Oh, the water, Lincoln PSD.
Lincoln PSD.
I attended a meeting on September 25th at Lincoln PSD, and asked for financial records from them. I was told by Ron Gregory at the meeting that I could get them. He also told the girls that were there, he said, "Make sure she gets them." Called again October 15th, no response. As of today, I do not have any records, have not been given any. I think there's a total lack of transparency there at the Lincoln PSD. While I attended the meeting, September 25th, it was Mr. and Mrs. Sharp were there, Mr. Moffett was there. I had a few questions to ask board members. After hearing Ron Gregory and his attorney, and Mr. McMillan answering people there, their questions, I felt, I was afraid to even ask the questions. I've become scared, and sort of froze. So they went into executive session. While outside, I didn't know Michael Moffett at the time, but I, I said, "What does someone do if they want to ask questions?" And after they're finished with the executive session, he said, "Well, you just go in there and ask them." I said, "Well, I'm really scared." I said, "I'm really afraid of them." He said, "Well, if you, you know, feel afraid," he said, "I'll walk in there with you." And I said, "Well, you know, I don't know you, but he is a pretty big guy, so." I thought, you know, there's some protection there, you know, if you went in there with me. So I do want to ask some questions. So I went back in there and sat down, he sat down beside of me. During the first part of the meeting, I was sort of behind the board members, you know, listening. And when I started asking the questions, I asked, I had asked for 12 months of my water bill to be printed out. Mr. Gregory said, "Well, one of the girls took a picture of that with her iPhone for you. Can't you run that off on your computer?" I said, "Well, is there no printer here that can be used?" You know, "Run that off." "You can't afford print and paper?" And then, I asked him for a copy of the financial records. And he was like one of those fish that, you know, start swelling up, and he was really getting angry. And I got really scared. Then I asked why my water bill is 34.41. I knew that my water bill should have been more than that, you know, and some people would be glad to pay 34.41. My water bill is usually 60 or 70 dollars. And I wanted to be honest about it and let him know that I wasn't paying the right bill. When I found out that there were probably over 1,000 customers that got that same bill, maybe more. And the attorney was sitting here, I was sitting here, and Mr. Moffett was sitting here. The attorney turned around in my face, and he said, "If you want a $200 water bill, we'll make sure you get one." And while he was doing that, he got some, in my face, he spit on me. Ron Gregory said, "Why don't you ask these questions at the beginning of the meeting when you were here the first time?" He said, "You sat there like a deaf mute." You know, we don't need that. And I understand that you all are taking care of that. I think, you know, it might be a little too late. I hope not. I had a question about my water bill. It says, net amount to be paid 70 dollars and 46 cents. But if I wait till October 25th and pay this, I only have to pay 34 dollars and 41 cents. So I'm paying late. I don't know about you guys. That needs to be straightened up. The water company's losing money. It's gonna go into bankruptcy. Got a few things that people shared with me. I am just about sick of the ongoing mistakes from Lincoln PSD. This is from Jessie Griffin. She wouldn't care for me to share this. I understand the possible occasionally messed up bill, but here we go again, another bill messed up. Stopped by to see why it showed a past due amount, knowing I hadn't delivered the last one, wait for the delinquent date. Answers and rudeness was all I got. A former employee of the municipality, she worked for St. Albans Water. You never ever get attitude, even if you have been reamed out multiple times over the same thing. Ours was usually broken water lines. However, there was nothing wrong with, in my simple opinion, our previous bill, nor did the PSD and Charleston seem to think. Fingers crossed that the company doing the billing, as I was told, was being done out of house. Why's our water bill's going, been done out of house? If they weren't broken, why did they need fixed? I have had horrible time with Lincoln PSD for months and months. It's from Sarah Smith. Now, I have three payments within six months that has just disappeared with no explanation. It's a total waste of time to call or even go in because they don't tell you crap. The end of July, we had a main water pipe break by the main road. It took them three months to finally come out and stop the leak. Because it took them so long to fix it, I have tons of property damage and damage to my home. I am looking into hiring an attorney to possibly get the damage fixed that they have caused. Totally crazy, and I hope the meeting gets something solved. No payments received for two months, according to them, but funny thing is, I pay them through my bill pay at the bank, and both checks have been cashed. Something seriously wrong there. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, can we have a copy of all of them?
Sure. My dad has some rental houses. His tenants haven't paid a water bill in six months, three rental houses. They haven't got a water bill in six months. Their water's still on. And he has had to go to Lincoln PSD because they overcharged him. He lives alone. And his water bill is usually 34.41. It is now 80 dollars. They were telling him that he owed more. Go figure. My husband, okay, went to take a shower, only tomorrow, no water. Does anyone know why? The water company doesn't. I called him. My husband checked our meter, excuse me, when he got home from work. It's gone. The dummies come and took my meter. I can't believe it. I went and paid our water bill, it's not even due till the 25th. They keep changing it, they turned off the water, they took the entire meter. What is wrong with these people? We have been on the water line for 30 years. We have never paid a late bill. They pulled our meter. Who can I contact? Will it do any good? Something has to be done. Who's running Lincoln PSD?
If you could, if you know the names of those people, do you even render records till you leave it? That way, we'll not do set law. I was gonna actually just...
Okay, now, there were some that asked me not to. Because they're afraid, they're afraid their waters will get turned off.
Well, what I would...
And the meter will disappear, and there won't be any meters.
But what, what I would like to do is have a copy of that, so we can give it to the prosecuting attorney.
Make her a copy on her own machine.
Use my own paycheck, and my own ink. Well, if you give me that credit card that Ron Gregory still has, I will go out to Staples or Osmac's, and I'll have them for apple again. I wish someone would report what's going on, the corruption and nonsense at the Lincoln PSD. Payments for months have mysteriously disappeared, leaving customers with no idea what to do. You call and ask questions, and no one has a clue what to say. It's always the same response. "We're changing the computer programs, and we have no idea when things will be fixed." So a couple of days ago, we had no water for five hours. When it did come back on, we had no idea if we should use it or boil water advisory. We haven't had a boil water advisory in a while, and water lines have been busted. I definitely would change water companies if I had the opportunity. If you happen to get any information about the situation, I would love to be messaged. Please send it to me. I'm at my last resort, not sure what to do past this point. Thank you so much. When do I get a red late payment per se on Monday? And then, my regular scheduled bill comes on Wednesday. I get an overdue bill before I get a regular original bill? Doesn't make any sense, does it? This is another one I'll read, I don't want, I'm not here to offend or make anybody mad, but sometimes that does happen. And I really don't know any of you guys personally. I think you're probably trying to do a great, a good job with, you got, you know, Ron Gregory's out there, so somebody's doing something with him. The board and the county commission were told almost a year ago, to the day, of what Mr. Gregory was doing, coming to the meetings in a stupor, and numerous other things. The water board was also told, then, Gary McAllister was the president of the board, brought it to the commission's attention. I blame the county commission, the Lincoln Public Service District, the acting general manager, John Reif, for not taking action, knowing for over a year and not speaking up. Just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a copy of those? It's all right. All right, next on the agenda is Johnson Askey.
Gentlemen, I'm, I'm speaking because she told me I had to. You've heard enough, and I'll say it's on our agenda, that we're gonna do this, or I have to do this. The bottom line is this, if we can't bill correctly, we can't collect correctly, and if we can't service correctly, then we really raise the question, what's the quality of our water? And, and that cannot be compromised. So we have to get a hand in this, and we really appreciate any help you can give us.
All right. So we have the public comment. Next on the agenda is the discussion concerning possible action, and we have Lincoln PSD.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't say anything.
That's all right.
I did attend that meeting because the issues in, in July with duplicate billing and then missed billing in August, and that was a big issue. I tried contacting the president, just asking some basic questions. He said, "Well, I can't discuss that personal stuff with you." And I said, "Well, I'm a customer, I'm treasurer of the fairgrounds, and I, I am a customer." Then he goes on, he said, "I said, 'Well, just tell me when your meeting is.'" He said, "Well, I can't answer that, you have to talk to my lawyer." I had to call the lawyer, have the lawyer call me back to tell me when the meeting was. It just seems like a big waste of time and effort for some simple questions. So, just my two cents. I think you guys are, know the issues and can address them, but just wondering.
All right, thanks. Next on the, on the agenda is the discussion concerning possible action. Jim Gaypart was supposed to be here. I'll see Jim Gaypart in the office. All right. Well, he's not gonna be here, but I'll go ahead and share with you what we have. And what we have done was concerning the Lincoln PSD. I believe it was two meetings ago, two meetings ago, if I'm correct, maybe three. We entered into a series of probably five different orders. And one of those orders was to initiate an investigation, have our prosecuting attorney initiate an investigation on Lincoln PSD. And because in code, in West Virginia State Code, in six, in chapter, was it, chapter 16-13A-3A, and I think everybody here is probably familiar with that by now, if you've been reading. In order to remove any board members, or to take action, you have the county commission, the public service commission, or there has to be a signatures by the people in the district to actually remove any, any board member. So, with the concerns that we've had, the concerns that have been brought to us, not only with the bulk water, with billing, we have, we turn that over to our prosecuting attorney. I was, I was under the impression that Mr. Gaypart would be here this evening to give us an update. I spoke with him earlier on this week, and he said that he is building a case, and that he is gonna present that before the circuit court. Okay. With that being said, regarding some of the issues that we, that we have with billing, I know that the, you know, the county commission pays a water bill at the Mokorko Community Center, and after reviewing the water bill, I think our water bill was past due. It was, was supposed to be received in 1776. So, I mean, we're dealing with the same thing. I'm a customer of the Lincoln PSD, and I understand your concerns. So, with the issues that we have, with not being able to get financial records when asked, I petition, I'm asking our county commission to petition the public service commission to open up a general investigation into operations and financial affairs of Lincoln PSD.
Sooner.
I'll say sooner.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That being unanimous, motion carries. Next.
Sorry, is, is there a reason the prosecutor isn't here tonight?
Uh, he's actually upstairs in the room.
Okay.
His, his court's well over.
So, could he be here within the next...
He could be in here within 45 minutes.
Okay.
But he's not here right now, so we're not gonna wait.
One of the other things that our president didn't mention is, we also ask at the same time that we ask the prosecutor to do it, we also ask the ethics commission concerning possible violations of public meeting laws and things of that nature. So that's an ongoing thing right now also. So, this is being looked at from several different angles, and, and like President Matthew said, we, we have to act within the process that's available to us, you know. There's a lot of, we, we feel the same way you all do as far as being, and especially concerning the safe water. Because if you have breaks in lines, and you don't have boil advisories and things like that, a lot of people can get sick quick. And that is a big concern, and I think that's, besides all the other things that are going wrong, but I just wanted to let those in attendance know that, you know, we're doing everything we can, as fast as we can, to try to resolve this situation, because it is a matter of public health. It's a matter of safety, and, and the business end of it, you know, it's, that's important to me. You can't continue to operate any business the way that business has been operating, in my opinion. But we, we have, we have met with the prosecutor and talked with him about these things, and all these things are going on now, so. And because of the fact that we will have to rule on certain aspects of it and things, it really kind of binds us because it's an ongoing investigation as far as what we can do, or even say about it. So, and I, and I wanted to say, I appreciate Charles' patience for this, but it, it is being addressed every angle, every method that we can to address the situation, it is being addressed.
Could we, could we, could we ascertain from you guys if, if the prosecutor may be looking at removing two board members, or one?
Well, I think that, I don't...
That seems, that seems to be an issue.
I think he is looking at removing multiple board members. All right? One other thing on, you know, with the, with the Lincoln PSD, you know, we did have a public service district in our county, West Ham, who was actually recognized throughout the state. And because we have that, and I think we have those resources that's fairly close and available, I would like to petition the West Ham Public Service District to help us, at the Lincoln Public Service District, to provide billing and technical support. Let's ask their board to see if they can get Lonnie Wilson and his staff to come over and help us. Help them, we should say.
Well, I think, I think what we should do is, and I think that's a good idea because of the excellence of that particular organization, but I do think we need to make sure that our prosecutor is aware of us, our thinking along that line, and how we're going to handle that.
Well, can we go ahead and ask them? And if John Reif, and if the, if they feel like that they need the help, I mean, I'm sure that we have, from what I understand, there's a lot of people over there that are new, they're having a lot of trouble with the computer systems and the billing, so if we have an award-winning service right here in the county, why don't we just go ahead and get them, and ask them if they'll send some people over to help out?
I think that's good, and I think though, it seems to me like we've got to get around this thing some way, and, and stop two or three things. One, all this silly billing stuff, and water safety stuff. But it seems to me like financially, something's gonna have to be done immediately, I think, because they fired the, Mr. Griffin, the accountant, and got somebody else, and that doesn't sit well with me because he was the best in the state, I believe. And it, it seems like something's gotta be done immediately to get a hold of this thing, and, and so that we can assure the people there that we don't go into, as we heard somebody say, bankruptcy. We've got to be able to do something. I don't know, you know, if it means asking the judge, you get some kind of injunction, or whatever we get the prosecutor to do. We've got to have some kind of immediate action, and of course, on this, I guess I'd like to just apologize to the people. For me voting to put this guy on, I'm sorry that I ever done that, but... And I think the lesson to us is, we need to be more careful if we appoint members to whatever board they are. We need good people.
So, I have, there's a motion on the floor. Can I, can we get a second for the West Ham, to send a letter to them? There's a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That being unanimous, motion carries.
We could, I think, as Charles said there, I think we ought to directly address it with the prosecutor, concerning what's the quickest way to be able to get this thing going and that. Maybe have him talk to the judge.
Mr. Smith, we could hire Michael Griffin back to get in here and take over his job. He knows what's going on. Somebody needs to be over and take care of this.
With it being a safety issue, public safety issue, cannot be exaggerated.
Well, I think so, that's the whole reason, I, I think that's one of the reasons we need to do something. As Charles said, immediately with it, and, and immediately being as fast as we're legally allowed to do. And I think the best way to get that done is have the prosecutor consult with the circuit court judge, and see what his ideas are as to how to proceed.
They may want Mr. Matthews to take, he can get the public service commission to immediately come down there and do something.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you all give me the authority, I'll actually contact the public service commission tomorrow with, with our concerns and some of the documents that we have.
Sooner.
That being, in front of the discussion... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I think I wish, uh, I think I did nothing.
Yeah, I believe it was.
How many signatures does it take from citizens to have...
I think it's 5%.
5%?
Five, women, 5% of the district. In a district, Mercy, there's what, 2,500 something?
2186.
2186, and she knows all of them.
So, so, what's the soonest, if this can be delivered to the commission, I'm assuming? What's the soonest that you could take?
We would deliver them to the prosecuting attorney. We'd be going through the process of taking it to the circuit, circuit court, I believe.
I expect, we'd be willing to have a special league, you bring the judge, and we could...
But I really don't, I mean, you can go ahead and start that route if you'd like. I don't know whether we'd get there.
I mean, due to recent developments, it looks like to me that he is unable to fulfill his obligations to the water.
Well, he should just been a board member to start, but he shouldn't have been an administrator.
Okay, exactly. It looks like he might feel, you know, his obligations to the water board in any way with the recent developments that have come on. So, why, is, does that seat just sit there?
No, what we will have to do is, if, when, once he is removed, okay, if he is removed, once he is removed.
If.
I, listen.
If, yes.
If, yes.
The prosecutor, it still has to go through the process. But anyway, but once, you know, if, let's just say if there is a board member that gets removed, okay? Then what we're going to have to do, I'd say that we will appoint an interim board member for that seat.
Okay, because my fear is this, obviously the plant is bleeding money left and right. And if it doesn't get stopped soon, we've already heard bankruptcy. So in the event that that happens, I feel that there is not much that we have to, not many choices that we'll have. It's basically start drilling our own wells again or basically be looking to American Water for service. And I don't know about anyone else in the room, I can't speak for anyone else, but personally, with the events over the past year, I feel a little iffy about that. So that's my concern. I'd like to keep the Lincoln PSD. I like keeping our jobs, the community jobs, you know, it's just, it's just a good thing to do. And my fear is, though, that we are going to be forced into the situation to choose between, you know, to choose to go to American Water or not.
Well, Kim, let's just, we'll go through this process, I mean, and what, you know, we need to take this one step at a time and, and, you know, and get this resolved as soon as possible. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think we need to look at that situation right now because I don't think we're there yet, okay? And I think with the action that we have taken and the action that, you know, that we have taken, you know, in this meeting, and with what the prosecutor said that he has done, I think that things are going to be taken care of rather quickly. There's a gentleman that's standing up in the back, I'd like to give him a floor.
Sir, I've been a resident of Allen Creek for over thirty years, and we've always been very proud of the Lincoln PSD. Any problems we have had have been minor, and I think that reflects the competence of the staff that we've had all these years. And I wonder why somewhere around two years ago that that staff was dismantled and in some cases made to retire. And maybe there's an asset there that we should look back at and reconsider.
Well, I'll tell you what, you know, you mentioned that, and that's something that the, the people on the public service commission, I mean, the Lincoln PSD, that's something that they can look at. You have to understand that's an autonomous board, you're a commission. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move forward. We have David Webb and Rick Helton regarding the flood, flood area from Hamlet to Yawkey.
Okay, as I promised you a couple months ago that I'd keep you all informed of what we're doing with the flood issue, as you know, the Lake County Commission tasked the Conservation Agency to take a look at the flood problems in the Hamlet, Griffithsville, Yawkey, Dubal area. And what we have done, myself and Rick Helton, the floodplain manager, is we got a group of people together Tuesday, a week ago, and toured that area with the Army Corps of Engineer, the Director of the West Virginia Conservation Agency, Mr. Matthews, who was with us, and then we had the assessor there also with maps, floodplain maps of all the areas that flooded, and Guy Brown, he put all that together for us. Appreciate that. What they decided to look at is there's a program that's called the Silver Jacket Program. I wasn't aware of that, but the Army Corps of Engineer has a program, it's called the Silver Jacket Program. And they're including, Lincoln County was part of it, but they're stepping that up. And that Silver Jacket, all it is is a group of federal people along with state people to look at these type problems and collectively get funds together. It consists of FEMA, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, NRCS, the Army Corps of Engineer, Homeland Security, along with the Conservation Agency from each particular state. So they have throwed us in that, also, that Silver Jacket thing to take a look at. Again, Rick, you have anything to add? I know you were, you were putting together some...
Yeah, Dave, thanks. If I might, I've got some passing, some handout here. Like Dave said, Corps of Engineers stepping up, and I believe they already mentioned a possible funding of maybe up to a hundred thousand dollars. Put this package together. Basically, if you look at the, the front page there, it's just kind of a basic proposal, paying funding for developing a Lincoln County All Hazards Plan. And the reason we're going that way, a hundred thousand dollars that has to be spent or can be spent either on a planning issue or an engineering issue. And with the high cost of an engineering, a hundred thousand dollars won't go very far. So, and also, in order to qualify for FEMA grants and some of the state grants, you have to have an approved all-hazard plan for the county, which I know, being on the LPC myself, we're, we're doing a emergency operations plan, but we need to have that hazard mitigation and all-hazards plan added to it. So once we get that, once we get this done and we can qualify for other, other programs, once we get the Lincoln County Floodplain Services Proposal sent in and taken care of. If you look back on the second page, that was the original message with all the attendees from Joe Tremboli of the Army Corps Engineers, talked about what we did. The next page over is, after talking to Joe several times this week and then today, finally finishing up some discussions, we, we're focusing our proposal on the planning element to meet that all-hazards plan. We're going to call it the Lincoln County Floodplain Management Plan or All-Hazards Plan. We haven't figured it out yet. The third group there, it's a two-page template of the Flood Risk Management Project Proposal. I took the liberty to fill in the top line of the name and then some of the teams. One of the aspects of this is it has to be a multi-agency focus. That's the only way that money will be. They just can't turn it over to Lincoln County with just Lincoln County offices involved. It has to be a multi-agency. So I put it in the commission, of course, the commission's participation, assessor's office, the floodplain management office, Soil Conservation Agency, the National, or the West Virginia Flood Insurance Program, Army Corps of Engineers. We have a regional West Virginia Homeland Security rep liaison, his name is Greg Fuller, made contact, or I've left a message for him to call me back. The recently formed zoning committee, I don't know if there's a formal name for it, but that's what I put out there. Eventually, we, that would be...
It's the Lincoln County Planning Commission as well.
Lincoln County, okay. Planning Commission, if I'm mistaken there. And then Lincoln County OES, Office of Emergency Service, because, you know, there sits the emergency management part of it. And then, of course, and try to involve the Health Department and maybe there are others that we can do. And that last page basically is kind of a summary of, of the proposal and what we have to provide. The highlighted areas kind of give you some ups and downs about what we have to do, but with talking with Joe today and going online and checking things out after we got off the phone, this is something that has to be done probably in the next two weeks, two and a half weeks. He's working on it. I'm sending him information that I'm gathering. Dave, if you have anything that we can get together and put that together, but...
The only thing I'm hearing, Rick, NRCS definitely needs to be a part of that.
Yeah, right. That was in his original email, so I just didn't, I banged it out before it come over here. But it, it looks like, he thinks we can qualify, and there's only two of these branded per year, fiscal year, per state. So that's one of the reasons, he doesn't know of any of them being put in, so, but that doesn't mean, that's just his district, so hopefully we can get it.
We need to talk a lot of support for that project from us.
That probably, that probably would help.
So we could, further on, we could probably...
Yeah, tell me, Jim.
I go ahead and make a motion that we send a letter in support of the project as outlined by Mr. Helton and Mr. Webb.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, just to kind of give you all a heads up, I don't know if you are familiar with what's going on, but we have David Webb and Rick Helton, David Webb is with the Conservation District, and Rick Helton, of course, David Webb's our representative at Lincoln County, and Rick Helton is our floodplain manager. We've asked them to look at our flooding issue from Hamlet all the way down to Yawkey. They got some people together last Tuesday, and they were kicking around, you know, giving a hundred thousand dollars that we could possibly qualify for so that we could get a study done to actually, you know, start bringing in some funding into our area so we can fix that problem, okay? Just kind of giving you all a heads up on what's going on. David Webb, you have something to say?
Yes, and again, Tribe Rivers did provide us with a bus for that day and a driver to do all this with, so if the commission or if you'd like for us to send them something or the commission might do that, but that's really a thumbs up to Tribe Rivers for doing that for us.
I think we should probably send a letter.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, they were very, very helpful there. The other thing I had real quick, we just had our Solid Waste Authority meeting a couple of hours ago. We finished our county cleanups for this year. We had a total of nine cleanups, the most ever, and we got all those accomplished before the weather started here. And again, we appreciate the funding, the fifteen thousand dollars that the commission provided to do that, to provide those dumpsters with. Ms. Hallgren asked me if she could get on the agenda at your next meeting to come in and officially give you the numbers of how much tonnage and what we spent and so on.
We'll put her on the agenda.
Yeah, we can put her on, Jim, for the next meeting. That's it.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Ricky Dowd regarding the wastewater update at the Harts, with the heart septic system and the McCorville system.
And I think, let me start with McCorville.
All right.
So it's okay. All right, on the other end of the water discussion? I want to give you an update, McCorville, McCorville's a community center that belongs to the Lincoln County Commission that was originally a school building. Our guess is that the septic system at McCorville is original, you know, put in when the school was built, which was a while ago. So there are a couple issues that we're facing. One is that the component pieces of this system are not being manufactured by anybody anymore that's that old. And so we just had, apparently it was like a seven hundred dollar...
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. We just had a piece that went down, it was an eight hundred dollar piece, and they were fortunate enough to be able, I don't know where they found it, somebody's basement or something, they were able to find a piece to replace it. So that's one of the issues. The other issue, which is probably a positive issue, is that the waste load at McCorville now is much less than when it was a school. Fewer people going through the reason of that. So the folks who are doing the maintenance there have suggested that it might be worthwhile for the commission to consider putting in a new system. They've run some numbers, depending on the type of the system they're looking at, and this is their estimate, then you did out, between twenty-two and twenty-eight thousand for a new system, an up-to-date system. I just wanted to get that on the commission's radar, especially since you're all struggling with all sorts of money issues.
Well, we're not struggling with money issues.
Right, but, well, you're struggling on how to use the money.
Yeah, we have to make sure we use our money wisely.
Right. So...
You did the heart system, you can't put something like that in at McCorville?
The McCorville doesn't have enough room to do an in-ground system. The amount of space is...
People would be able to use?
And the closeness to the creek. So the water table's going to be so high that if you try to put in a leach field, you probably...
There's a, I was going to, could you, could you call Eric Stuller, you got with the Lincoln EDA?
Sure.
They've done some research on different systems regarding some of the planning with farmers market. And he has, I guess, has contacted, he's been in contact with the firm that could, that they, I guess they have, they've been installing some systems in the county and with the load, I guess, that, that is there at McCorville. I think that if you talk to him, it could be probably around ten thousand dollars is what he was talking about with just, you know, with some of the amount of grease. Because we were looking at something like forty thousand dollars. And, you know, we're thinking with the amount, you know, of loads, so we're probably looking at the same kind of thing with the McCorville Community Center.
Oh, call her.
Yeah.
So that's McCorville now. The harder, the harder piece is the Harts Community Center.
Oh, there it is. Good. I'm getting behind you.
I know, sure. I don't know if that's a good, I don't want to put any rabbit ears in it. Okay, okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about Harts, and I want to thank Rick. Rick is on the board of the Harts Community Center. It's been really helpful and valuable to have been here, you know, as a county employee to be able to turn to him and get his help and advice and to have another brain and some other peers to bounce some of his stuff off of. So one thing that I think I would recommend to the commission in the future is before the commission buys another school for a dollar, they have somebody check out the septic system, if that's true. Just, you know, it may not be worth the dollar to buy the, buy the thing. I was thinking about that the other day, because we didn't, I mean, we didn't even think about looking at the septic system. You remember that about a year ago last fall, we got a thing from the state DEP that said that the commission was out of compliance because there had not been any of the electronic formal monitoring reports done at McCorville or at Farrell'sburg, at William Farrell'sburg. It was the same problem at Harts, although the board owned it then. And so they were, you know, sort of threatening, got to get this done, got to get sued a lot. We, at that point, told the state, we're going to take care of this, at Harts, we're going to create an in-ground system so we wouldn't have to do any of these kind of reports. The system at Harts hasn't since, I think, since the commission has taken ownership and obviously before that, I don't know how long before, it's never worked at all. All it is, is a septic tank that overflowed, so it's not a good system. The only silver lining in that is that it's not being used by a lot of people. And once we figure out it overflowed, what we have been doing is having it pump. When it gets high, get rid of that stuff so it doesn't go into the groundwater. Okay. Okay. Okay, you're scratching. Sure, great. In this June, June four, June of two thousand fourteen, the commission accepted a bid to put in a new septic system. It's going to be an in-ground system rather than a direct disney system. And in midsummer, we got another thing from the DEP saying we're still out of compliance because we haven't gotten any reports. We replied to them and said, okay, we're putting this new system in. And that sort of takes us up to the current point. The person who got the bid for the new system, I think we agree, has been slow in getting work done. I feel like he's needed to be pressured quite a bit. He's not very good at answering messages and emails, telephone stuff. In September, the county health department, Joe and Joel and I went to do the inspection of that system. The deal was that in the bid document, you didn't get paid until the system passed inspection. And let me give you a diagram that sort of explains, let me, sort of explains both, excuse me, sir, what we found when we did the inspection. This is from the back of Harts, from the back of the building. And the green lines, there's the green lines and the red lines. Let me talk about the green lines. What we found, and let me talk about how these, what we did as part of the inspection, we did dye tests. What dye, how the dye test worked is we take colored dye, like bright fluorescent stuff, and put it not in every place, but in a selected place, in a toilet, sink... What dye, how the dye test worked is we take colored dye, like bright fluorescent stuff, and put it, not in every place, but in a selected place, in a toilet, sink, in a bathroom, and let it go out and then go to the septic tank to see if the dye...
Is that called a process?
No, that's a different test.
You're in the right area.
You're in the right area. Test dyeing the stuff. Okay, so we, so we did some dye tests and we started doing the dye tests in the kitchen area, where the red line is. So we did green dye in the kitchen and neon blue in the original building. And went out to the new tank, which is where the green lines are, and none of those dyes appeared in the green tank.
So what does that mean?
So that means that, because this is being flushed, we've got gallons and gallons of water coming in. It means that that part of the building is not tied into this new septic tank. So that's not good.
No.
It's not good at all. But we did find that the trailer, the weight room and the gym were tied into the septic tank.
So, so what you're saying is the kitchen and the classroom, the red stuff is not tied in.
The red stuff.
We're gonna have to tie that in.
We are, well, for what I've been complaining.
All right, well then, what do we need to do to tie that in?
Well, we've got a couple of problems. I would comment if it wasn't a problem. Okay, one of the issues is that the contractor thought, of course, that he had done everything correctly. And using the green lines, he positioned the new septic tank, you've got your inflow where the line comes in, and then you've got your outflow where it goes out down to this field where the chambers are. The inflow lines, if we were to bring, if we were to bring the red lines in, the red lines are so deep that they won't reach this tank. And you know what they say about poop that doesn't go a pill? Well, it's not gonna go up. There's no way to make it go up. Technical, technical.
Is there a creek nearby?
Has NRCS, that's what... Yes. Yeah. So that brings, that brings us to the second, to the second.
So what do you think that we need to do?
Well, here's some options.
All right.
Let me have one of them. A way, and I think the best way to handle this, we're still trying to get some advice, is to put another tank over where the red lines are. And that that tank would be positioned so that it could take the inflow correctly and then we take the outflow and tie it into the green lines. So it would go down. That seems to be the best one. I think the option for the commission to do one, and Rick and I have talked about this at length, one would be to terminate the contract with this guy. Who, you know, as I say, he has some problems. He is qualified under the state regulations to do this kind of thing. Terminate the contract and re-bid. I think I can say almost with a hundred percent surety that if we would do that, we would expect to have to pay more money than the current occupation. I think anybody else coming in is gonna know that we're in trouble.
My law is, being a contract supporter, if there's something unknown when you get that contract, we're still out. If it's an unknown thing, getting a thing that you wouldn't know, you know, by just being very deep.
There's a question about what due diligence a contractor ought to do. And I'm not sure that there's a black and white answer to that.
So how much money are you talking about, Rick?
The contract was for twenty-two thousand.
How much extra?
I'm not sure. It might be some, some extra thousand.
Do we, do we know this is not being taken care of? I mean, I know you say what you put in there didn't go into your new tank.
Right.
But where does it go?
Uh, we don't know that.
It goes right here, goes to the other side.
Well, where does it go from there?
What, I say, but that's not in compliance, wherever it goes, it's not in compliance.
That's a holding tank and not a septic tank.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's going in, okay.
It's not going into a field as far as a, a leach field.
And you're saying this leach field's lower than the tank it's going into right now?
Yes, not the leach field.
Okay. Okay, well, this one's too high, here's what I'm saying.
Correct.
Somewhere this is going into something that's not too high. You understand what I'm saying?
If it's going anywhere.
Well, maybe, but then it'd come back, wouldn't it?
Well, you, well, see, it's not being used the whole time.
That puts in the name of the cafeteria and the kitchen area, which we use occasionally.
And my question is, I mean, how many lines are we talking about there?
We're talking about probably three, three different lines.
You know, I would look at it two, but I don't know if you can or not, but, you know, can, those lines are lower for what reason? Do you know? I mean, are, why are they deeper than the other?
I think in Harts, they're deeper because at Harts, there was this addition and this addition and this addition in the original thing. You've got zillions of people putting stuff in and...
I, I just didn't know. It's simpler to put in a tank and cheaper than that, we would hope, you know. I would also look at the possibility, I don't know what you'd have to do, if there's only three, three exits from there, elevated exits. You see what I'm saying?
Higher ground level.
If they can actually do that, if you can do it, I don't know you...
Yeah, they'd have to shoot the elevation to make sure you'd have a...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I think we need to look at both ways to try to figure out the cheapest way, you know, and...
Well, one of the things we've got, depending on what the commission decides, is we've got a meeting scheduled. Sunday at two thirty, where we're bringing together Rick and Rick, Lloyd and Jeff, who are the people who are working on this, and Haas. To sort of sit down and hammer this thing out.
Because I, I think you get back to smart, dramatic, contract, re-bid and things like that. It really depends on how, whether when you bid, if you grasp those lines or not.
He's gonna say, he thought he did everything correct.
But, I'm gonna throw a Rick Helton...
Sure, you go right ahead.
My estimation after talking with him is that he didn't do due diligence. He just went in there, wham-bam, and put a septic tank in and connected what lines he could see and that was what he was trying to do. I mean, he didn't, he went around, he said, he says he went around and looked at all the discharges in the, inside the school. But obviously, he didn't find out where they, where they were going to. And it was, I think, if somebody's gonna bid a contract, they should do the due diligence and find out where it's gonna come out of the building and where is it connected to now so that we, so they could figure out the whole, the whole schematic of lines and drains and such of that nature.
But I think, you know, and having said that, I think that, you know, I, I'll just look at it as far as you're, you're going to, you know, free alternatives as far as how to handle things like that. I think even you talk with the person that's done this, if he's gonna continue to work on this, he ought to understand, we may pay some, but it's not gonna be, you know, top dollar for the rest, you know, I mean, because to me, part of this is a problem on his end.
Yes.
Where he did not have a good idea what the job was and bid on it.
Right.
You know, and, and, but I think, you know, I do think that probably getting someone else and trying to re-bid and things like that, it's, it's, it'll longer, take longer. And, and I don't think, you know, if we, if we could save money that way, it'd be fine, but I don't think we can do it that way.
Well, the other two choices would be to stay with the current contract and tell them upfront, no more money regardless. And you gotta finish this thing.
Gotta make it work.
Yeah, make it work. And the third would be that we stay with them, but depending on contingency, we might come back to the commission and say, okay, it's gonna cost another two thousand to finish this thing.
Correct. Let me ask you a question. I mean, you guys are gonna meet on Sunday, right?
Yes.
One, I mean, you know, you may, why don't you all see what, you know, figure out what the best option is and then just come back in the next meeting and say, this is the best option. This is the way we need to go. All right, because, I mean, I trust your opinion, I mean, obviously, very knowledgeable about these kind of things.
Knowledgeable enough to...
Yeah, and you are...
Have it all over me.
You are tactic, the Rick and Rick team.
You're the special cemetery area.
W W B.
He has found a new partner because he's getting rid of me.
Found a new partner, kicked to the curb.
The only question I have, commissioners, is if we have this meeting on Sunday, when we come to some decision, we have, are you gonna talk about the invoice or not?
That's the next one.
All right. Well, well, once he, once he goes over that, that item, what I'm wanting to know is, once we have this meeting and decide what we're gonna do, do we have the commission's approval to go ahead and go forward with, if we think it's the best thing for the county to go forward and let this contractor continue?
Well, I'll tell you, why don't we do this? Why don't we bring it back before the commission and then what we can do is, you can explain what it is so that everybody, and then, and then we can give you...
But two weeks now is...
So we, we have to have this done in two weeks. Is that, I mean, we're on a deadline.
What, how long if we do this?
You mean completed or?
No, I mean, are we on a deadline where we have to do this? If not, we can call a special session.
We're on the, a deadline because of the weather.
Right.
I guess I would like us to go with the idea that we would come back, would stick with this contractor. If we felt that there had been any more money involved, we would come back to the commission.
Yeah, because we're not, we're not gonna change anything if he's gonna do the same thing.
Right, he's got a contract for twenty-two thousand.
I don't know if I'm like the commissioner, but I said, it seems like we were talking about the kitchen part is what is more effective than anything. Well, it seems to me like that he may get this that completely, because I thought you had to have grease traps for the, in the kitchen thing before they went to septic.
We haven't found any grease traps.
Well, but this guy, if I can do that in order to meet the specs, we're gonna use that kitchen, it seems to me.
If it's, well, if it's used, it depends on the degree that the kitchen is used. If it's just used for reception, where people aren't necessarily baking and cooking, or they're just sort of bringing...
But that's now, that's now. I mean, we're gonna put a septic system in that serves that kitchen, it should be done.
I mean, I, I, I find, as long as you don't have to terminate the contract and re-bid, because I think that would require us to do that. I think if you stay with this current person you're working with and work something out with him, I think we all know, you know, if we have to pay a little bit more, then we can do that, so. And I don't really know that we have...
How much more are you talking?
I don't know. See, because...
You got like a ballpark.
Well, if we have to put, if we have to deal with a grease trap in the kitchen...
But that's another responsibility he had as...
Exactly, but that has not even come on the radar.
So he's gonna pay you that?
Well, what I would like to do is, is pay, not paying the whole thing, but there's a bill jacket for nine thousand nine hundred, which would pay for what labor has been done and the materials and supplies that these...
What have we got there? Maybe I missed that.
We have got, we have...
I mean, what is it? I mean, we got the leach bed?
Yes.
We got the tanks?
Yes, we have, we have lines coming from part of the building going into a new septic tank, which is working, going down to a leach field, a chambered field...
Early orange.
That is, is taking care of that part of the building. So that's the...
That's all, just keep it on, sorry.
I mean, I'm just trying to get, before we pay nine thousand, about...
Right, and it's, it's the, you know, the tank and...
That work's already been completed.
That work is already...
And there's, there's materials there, unused materials. So the materials have already been bought for this entire project and that was part of that nine thousand dollars. So the materials would be there.
Some of the materials.
Well, except, yeah.
There's some, you know, I, I'm anticipating more pipe. We may need to get another septic tank before we go there.
Well, okay, I'll do that. So you're...
Will you, will you tank work or do a grinder pump work?
Well, let's, let's do this, I wanna hammer something out, but I mean, we're gonna bring you back at the next meeting, right? We want you on the agenda at the next meeting, all right?
Sure, right.
If not, if we need a special meeting, we can call a special meeting, you all can get, let us know.
And I mean, the other thing is, I do it at the group meeting. If we have, if we have something that's pressing, press it.
Right.
I'm assuming we're not gonna have something that we'll hammer out Sunday is, okay, we need this done and this done and this done, which all can be done at no extra cost. So that's some of the finishing up. The grinder pump issue is that everything right now is non-electric, it's all grabbed.
So let's do this, are, are, you are finished with this, this issue?
I think, I think we are.
Okay.
If, if when the, when the bill jacket comes through, if you guys are gonna pay some...
He's gonna, gonna move on to our next, next, next item. Next on the agenda, we had Josh Brunfield request for an automobile. I believe Josh Brunfield is preoccupied right now with the, they just had a, he and his wife just had, had a baby boy today. So I'd say congratulations to the assessor, he's a good job.
And his wife. And we all know who does all the work.
Before we, before we move on, Zach Browning, drawdown request, let's go ahead and take care of it.
I have a couple of documents here for the Francis Creek Project. First up, it is a drawdown for the Small Cities Block Grant. Drawdown number six, in the total amount of one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents. That goes to pay Reason Two Planning and Development Council, one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents for administration work. And Griffith and Associates, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for accounting work. With the drawdown, I have the payment resolution, cover letter, financial page and all invoices.
Do we have a motion to give the president authorization to sign this?
No, no.
Move in a second, all those affected please say ah. Ah, if that being unanimous, motion carries.
And the other document I have tonight is the environmental review for the Francis Creek Project. What this is, is for every project that Small Cities Block Grants fund, they require us to do a environmental review of the project to see if it would have any adverse effects on the environment before we go to construction. This has to be completed and signed off by them before we can actually go to bid. So what I have tonight for the commission is the paperwork showing that we found there are no adverse effects because of this project. A letter stating that we haven't gotten any comments from the public concerning this environmental review and a request for the development office to release all funds to us so we can go to bid.
Do we need to sign that as well?
Yes.
All those affected please say ah. Ah, if that being unanimous, motion carries.
I said, one other thing I had tonight, we had our meeting for the bad buildings program, and Logan on the tent. It was attended by Mr. Helton and E. Sharks. Mr. Helton, I believe, was also attending the meeting, we're having it next Thursday. And I think he got a lot of useful information out of it, I believe. And he's, we'd like to invite everybody again, if you can find it, time in your schedule or anything, just let us know if you can make it and we appreciate it.
We actually discussed that in the, the planning commission meeting about working, trying to get somebody there at the meeting. And I think we're gonna ask you to give us an update on that.
Okay, well, since you, since you brought it up, thank you, Zach, for bringing that up. I was gonna put an email out, I didn't, I was gonna do it today, but didn't get it done, about asking certain members to show up, the commission and soil conservation folks, thanks to that tour group we had, because somehow that, you know, we have dilapidated buildings in our flood zones. And the Huntington Land Bank, which has been working very hard in Huntington, they did a presentation on it and basically brought up some facts about, the facts about how much more money that the, you know, these buildings take funds to maintain them or for police and fire and everything else. By taking these bad buildings out and doing those, they're actually gaining more money back into the city, county coffers or city coffers because you have development on it now. And so I, it's, it's a, it's a great program. I think more than, more eyes than ears to hear it and see it would be better and it's free lunch.
I think there's gonna be some people that attend it. You ready?
Four reasons to be there.
To Huntington, where at?
I read in two offices.
Read his office. At least Zach, Zach told me it was free lunch.
It's still free. It's still free.
I was actually looking for an area for you to get it.
Well, it's free lunch, yeah, is it, right?
I'm not gonna let you take it at the half before, because they really have nice lunches.
You go ahead.
You have to travel a lot.
You're hungry when you get there.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Half scared today.
Mary asked for an update the other day. I'll let you hear it, buddy. Uh, all these things are supposed to speak, so that's all. Uh, now, once this is signed off, I believe, I was hoping Rick Roberts would be here to double-check this. I believe she wants to go to bid, uh, in December, January. Uh, then the bid process takes about ninety days, so we hope to have a good construction.
Mr. Daypart. Yes, if we missed you, why don't you, uh, give us an update on your P S D.